Good evening. I call this September 19th, 2019 Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's exciting to see people come to the Planning Commission once in a while. Let's start off this evening with roll calls, starting on my right.
Rituja Indapri.
Rosheen O'Farrell.
Eric Brooks.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Mark Lewis.
And Josh Amato said he was on his way, but was running just a couple of minutes late, so he may come in yet. Okay, next, approval of this evening's agenda. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding the agenda? So we'll call the agenda approved by unanimous consent. And next is the meeting minutes from the September 5th meeting. If you've had a chance to look at those, does anyone have any comments or corrections from those meeting notes? Great, then we'll call the meeting notes from September 5th approved, again by common consent. Next is public comment on non-agenda items. So our agenda item this evening is zoning change for the Santoni property. If you'd like to speak about something other than that, now's the time to do it. So would anyone like to make public comment on a non-agenda item?
Yeah, there's a sign-in sheet, right?
Yes. Sometimes, though, people get them on the wrong one, so I always ask.
Well, I'm careful because I'm a planning commissioner. So, hi, I'm Nancy Anderson. My address is on record there. I am so happy to see Rosheen and Eric and Larry. And I miss you guys. My term ended a couple of years ago, and I was really proud of serving with you guys. It was awesome. So for the rest of you who maybe don't know me, I am a 23-year resident of the city of Sammamish. Actually, we weren't a city. We bought our house when it was unincorporated King County. And we had two little girls, and they were in the Issaquah School District, and I raised them with my husband. My husband's job got fiercely like he was never home. And then my job, I was never home. And then we're looking at our girls saying, what are we doing? We're never, we're not parents, really. So I ended up leaving my professional career and stayed at home. And so I became a community activist, I guess. I was really just, I was a volunteer, and I got to know a lot about this city. The thing is, starting about when we moved in, traffic was bad. The roads were rural standards. The public safety was terrible. No sidewalks, no shoulder. I had two little kids trying to ride their bike. I wouldn't let them ride their bike very far. So I was riding to King County, you know, council at that time, Kathy Lambert. I started when we were incorporated, and my husband volunteered on the incorporation efforts in 99. So then we were thrilled. Oh, my gosh, there's a city up here. Now I have new people to harass every time I see an accident on my street, or it's gridlocked due to a snowstorm. So, you know, even though I wasn't doing this then, I was busy raising kids, I did take the time to write emails to this city council. And I'm talking today because I'm frustrated. I have been writing these things since incorporation, about gridlock, about trees, about stormwater. I live on a property, .81 acres, R4 zoning, I border a wetland. It's paradise. I love going there. But my blood pressure is high when I'm driving around, and it refreshes me to go sit on my deck where I could breathe the fresh air and hear the birds and see the wildlife. So I implore you and the city council, get the job done. Correct the things that you've heard about since incorporation. And I'm not yelling at you guys. I understand. Your position is tough. And another thing that's tough about being on Planning Commission, it makes it look like we set our own agenda. And I pretty soon realized it's the staff that sets the agenda for the Planning Commission. You might, as a chair, negotiate this with the planning director, but I wanted things on the agenda during my term, and no way would that be considered. So I just ask that we listen to the citizens, you at the Planning Commission, your hands are tied to a certain degree, but we have to stop this destruction of our city. Our character is being lost. And you know what? I drove up here through, I'm on the southeast corner of the city, down 248 Southeast, I think it is, and it connects with 8th, I think, coming up here. Clear cut. Everything's gone. The bulldozers are there right now. I took a picture. It's outrageous. And I've spent my whole time in Sammamish saying, stop that. Thank you.
Nancy, the only thing, I have a question. Do you still have the five pit bull dogs in your backyard? Never mind. You don't have to answer.
Thanks for your comment. I would clarify slightly that it's really the council that sets the majority of the work plan, but then staff implements. So it's really the council that sets our agenda.
Very true.
Okay, I see Mary's on the list here.
Yes, I have to say, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
I'm taller than she is. Hi, I'm Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. In last Planning Commission, in this one, I emailed stuff in, so you have online versions you can look through. But I passed out three paper copy things, which you have in front of you. And just because Nancy spoke, I wanted to clarify, on the agendas for the Planning Commission, on the second page, it says, "The commission may add or take action on items not listed on this agenda." In case you hadn't read that, I think that's new. So anyway, there's hope there. Anyway, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, you remember from my docket from last year, which you guys approved, and it's going to council, that we have this map in the comprehensive plan. And the gray areas are steep slopes, and we're getting a legend put on, so people will actually be able to know that the steep slopes are there. So the comp plan has them. The stormwater code just passed through consent agenda on council, and here's Inglewood. You can see Inglewood is outlined in red, and you can see the yellow. The yellow is where steep slopes are, and the blue is where the landslide hazard area. And if you look very closely, you'll notice the yellow isn't in the landslide hazard area. So you can have steep slopes in a landslide hazard area or outside. There is some King County code for steep slopes, but our definition in our city says steep slopes have to be in landslide hazard area, so there is a problem, and I think that that should be fixed. So I've submitted two dockets for this year related to that. So on here, I wanted to show you, there's a concerned citizen who produced these maps for me. They had pulled the steep slopes, there's a GIS layer, and they had put it on here. So you can see there's a lot of steep slopes located along this side of the city. They are throughout the city, but this is just steep slopes with the outer boundary and the water put. And the city's always worried if they put something online, it might be wrong. So I grew up in Montana and Bozeman, and Gallatin County is our King County there. So I gave you an example of a disclaimer where they say, hey, the maps and data may not be the most current, and if you use it, it doesn't create liability on part of the county or departments or employees that results from it. And then when you're supposed to accept, they have different ones. This one actually says okie dokie, which I thought was rather humorous. So that's an example. And the things I emailed, there's a few more examples. So I wanted to particularly look at the big map here, while I have 45 seconds left. So what I want you to look at is, this would be geo-hazards, and I submitted a docket for that, because you're supposed to do geo-hazards per the GMA. If you look, you'll see the steep slopes, which is on the small map, and you'll see the erosion. There's actually three erosions, but we're only showing one, and the landslide hazard area, and the seismic. And they're pretty much all along this side, and we need to have specialized code for that. You can take the existing code for erosion, landslide, and seismic, kind of merge it all together, and then you can get a geo-hazard code that's clear, serves people better, would serve staff better, and would take less time for everybody. So I hope when that docket item comes up, you will want to do that. I wanted to make sure you have the maps, and you have the online versions from the last Planning Commission, where you can zoom in and see where you live or places that you know. Thank you very much.
Mary, is Billings in Gallatin County?
Billings is way on the east flat boring part of Montana.
I thought there was more population in that county.
Billings is larger. Bozeman is the sixth largest. That's where Montana State Bobcats are, and Paul Stickney went to Missoula. He's a grizzly. It's kind of like the Cougars and the Huskies here. Anyway, I grew up there. Thanks.
Now that we've got that all sorted out, thank you for your comments, Mary.
Oh, he's gonna scream.
Hi, Paul.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. It is nice to have Nancy Anderson back. She's got a lot to contribute, and I'm happy to see her. We started going to council meetings around six years ago or so. So anyway, at the same time as Larry Crandall. I just wanted to share a couple of numbers I've put together, not only to help this evening, but to help in this upcoming election season and in moving forward on what I think is the true number-one issue in the city, which is what is the long-term, you know, desired, I'll spit out the D, land use for our city over time? And there's going to be a lot of folks that will not see eye to eye on that, but there is some information that will help. So over the next few months, I'm going to drop a few snippets of information. And one thing ahead of the information this evening, which is only a couple sets of numbers, I took the time in August to really take a slow and deep read and dive into the 2003 Sammamish comp plan. And in taking the time to really understand what it is, there is a wealth of information there that could inform our community in reaching an end game that maybe we could even reach a community, you know, a consensus on land use. Not everybody agreeing, but informed. All right, here are some numbers. In Sammamish as of now, there are roughly 22,500 housing units. Of those, approximately 90% are single-family and, you know, 10% multifamily. Here's the interesting thing. Of the roughly 22,5, which includes houses in the pipeline and those built in 2019 as well, how many were permitted or started or authorized, I'm not sure I have the right term, under King County and how many on the city of Sammamish? Well, the answer's interesting. There were about 19,200 permitted under King County that were at the time of incorporation and in the pipeline at incorporation, and Sammamish did about 3,300. 2,500 single-family homes, about 500 in the pipeline, and 300 multifamily. So that's the information.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Anyone else on a non-agenda item?
I have one. Sorry, then I won't speak the rest of the evening. I couldn't make a promise on that. But there's a lot of things that are not known in Sammamish, and one of them I wanted to point out, I am remiss that our last meeting in September, September 5th, I think, I forgot to mention that from the July 19th or 18th meeting we had, and then we met again in September, the city of Sammamish turned a year older, and it was kind of quiet birthday. Mick Jagger also turned another year older, just to share that with you.
Fortunately, none of the rest of us did do that. All right, so, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to new business. I assume you are all aware that this evening's topic is the requested zoning change of the Santoni property. And correct me if I get any of this wrong, I think we'll have a staff presentation. We'll have a brief time to hear from the applicant. We will have public comment on the topic. We will then have a discussion up here with the objective of making a recommendation to the city council. I'd just like to remind everyone this evening that the Planning Commission has no authority. We make recommendations. We're an advisory board, so whatever we recommend to the council, they may take our recommendation, and they often do, but they also may not. So keep that in mind as we proceed this evening. All right? So let's start with the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Baughman, members of the commission, David Pyle, Community Development. We're here tonight to present to you an property owner-initiated proposal to rezone a piece of property in the southeastern portion of the city's town center. Staff will go into the details here in a minute, but just wanted to introduce it to you and let you know that this is something that was proposed by the property owner, not staff. And one of staff's responsibilities here is to assess the proposal per the criteria that we have in our codes, to process it following the procedural requirements of our codes, and to give the public opportunity to provide comment on it, and present that to you tonight for your consideration in making a recommendation to the city council as to how you would like to see this proceed. With that, I'll turn it over to staff. Miriam Leitner, Senior Management Analyst here, is going to give you a presentation, and then you can proceed with the public hearing.
Okay. I apologize in advance, this is not going to be the most exciting presentation that you've received here, but hopefully it will be informative. Yeah. Thank you. I'm only five feet tall, which makes the whole distance thing harder. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time just talking about the order of events, which our chair already covered, but I'll be providing some background information around comprehensive plan processes and site-specific land use map amendment processes as well before going into the applicant, or, sorry, before going into the proposal itself. And then we're going to conclude with an overview of the review criteria from the code, and then some options for Planning Commission consideration. After this, the applicant is going to provide their presentation, and will open things up for the Planning Commission to ask questions. And once all questions have been answered, the Planning Commission will open and close the public hearing before deliberating and voting on its recommendation to city council. Yes?
Could you speak up? I'm having a difficult time hearing you. Thanks.
Is this better? Yes, okay. So before we jump into the proposal itself, I thought it'd be helpful to quickly go over the process of comprehensive plan amendments and then also site-specific land use map amendments. So Sammamish operates under the Growth Management Act, which directs cities to do a periodic update of the comprehensive plan every eight years. And then in between those periodic updates, an annual review can occur, which allows two types of amendments. The first is a site-specific land use map amendment, which changes the designation of a property or a small group of properties on the comprehensive plan's future land use map. And then the second is a text amendment, which changes the text of the comprehensive plan or our development regulations. So tonight's application is a result of a site-specific land use map amendment that was docketed back in 2017. So we also wanted to spend a little bit of time going over how a site-specific land use map amendment fits into the broader development picture. So before a site-specific land use map amendment application can be submitted, a docket request has to be both submitted and docketed. So docket requests can now be submitted year-round. We have an annual deadline where we pull all of the docket requests that have come in, and we bring those to Planning Commission and city council for review, with city council making the ultimate decision in terms of what's put forward for further review the following year, and that's setting the docket. So one thing to note is that the four-month time estimate that you see on screen is actually the period of time from the annual deadline until when city council sets the docket. So potentially, this can take longer, as it did with our applicants who were impacted by the building moratorium. So after a request is docketed, an applicant can submit their site-specific land use map amendment, and this application provides more detailed information about the property, about the proposal, and about the potential impacts of their application if it were to be approved. Once review is completed by staff, the application proceeds to legislative review with the council making the decision on whether the application is approved or denied. So if the application is approved by city council, then the applicant can proceed forward with submitting a zone reclassification. And if the zone reclassification gets approved by the hearing examiner, then the zoning for the parcel is changed on the city's zoning map as well. So hopefully, these steps sound somewhat familiar, because this was part of what was reviewed and revised as part of Title 24A, which Planning Commission and City Council did earlier this year. Okay, so once the zone reclassification is approved, then the applicant can proceed with submitting a land use application. This application varies by what type of project it is. It could be a unified zone development plan. It could be a binding site plan. It could be a preliminary subdivision. These applications are reviewed by staff to ensure that the development meets standards in the code, and the standards address things like setbacks, tree retention, building dimensions, critical areas, open space, vehicle and pedestrian access, parking, and other areas. And these applications are usually very complex. They have plans, reports, supporting documents that are required as part of submittal. Applicants have to host open houses or neighborhood meetings, and they're required to provide site plans, code compliance narratives, a traffic and currency certificate, stormwater, and traffic reports and other materials as part of their application as well. Additionally, for a town center, the applications are reviewed to ensure that they support responsible and coordinated growth and development within the town center subarea. So depending on the type of project that's being proposed, the application is either approved by the Community Development Director or by the hearing examiner. So assuming that the land use application gets approved, then an applicant can apply for a site development permit, and this is the phase of work where you'll start to see clearing and grading activity. Once site improvements are complete and inspections conducted to ensure that the work is done in compliance with the city's building regulations, and after that, applicants can go ahead and apply for their building permits. And once the permits have been issued and the work is done and inspection is conducted, and if everything's okay, then a certificate of occupancy is issued, and this marks the official end of the project, and residents at this point can start moving in. So altogether, typically, the permitting construction process takes two to three years, and this is on top of the time that it takes to get through the comprehensive plan amendment and associated zone reclassification, which can also take about two years to complete. So there were several questions that came in relating to this topic, so we wanted to show where the applicants currently are in the process, which is here. The proposal that you're considering tonight, again, only changes how a parcel can be used in the future. So issues that are related to tree retention, critical areas, the number of housing units, and other topics would actually be addressed during the land use stage and are regulated by the zoning controls. Okay, so moving on to the actual proposal itself, the applicants are Frank and Maureen Santoni, and you'll be hearing directly from them later this evening. Their property is located in Town Center, just off of 228th Avenue Southeast via Southeast 6th Place, and is almost two and a half acres in size. And they're proposing to change the future land use map designation of their property from TCE to TCA. So on screen, you'll see an aerial view of their property on the left, and then the zoning of the entire Town Center area on the right, with the Santoni property outlined in blue. Adjoining properties, as you can see, are designated TCE, TCA, and TCB. We also wanted to show a high-level overview of the differing zonings and designations within Town Center, just to help better understand what's being requested. So each zone in Town Center has an allocated density as well as a maximum density, and the maximum density can be achieved through two different public benefit programs, also known as incentive programs. And those are the Affordable Housing Pool and the Transfer of Development Rights programs. And the reason that we've chosen to show both of these densities is because once the zoning is changed, the two incentive programs could be used to achieve the maximum density that you see on screen. So we wanted Planning Commission to really be able to consider the full range of future possibilities when making their recommendation. Town Center has five different zoning designations, each with different goals. TCA is a mixed-use zone with a pedestrian-oriented mix of retail, office space, residential, and public uses. And TCB is the mixed residential zone with a variety of housing types, including apartments, townhomes, and a limited number of single-family residences, duplexes, and cottages. There's also some limited commercial opportunities for properties in TCB that are bordering TCA TCC is the lower-intensity residential zone, and that includes predominantly single-family homes, townhomes, and cottage housing, and this zone is intended to act as a buffer to the existing residential areas outside of Town Center. TCD is the civic campus zone focused on maintaining and enhancing the Sammamish Commons and other complementary uses. And then finally, TCE is the reserve zone, which allows current uses to remain while saving the opportunity for future development. And only single detached dwelling units are permitted in this zone. So as previously mentioned, the applicant's property is TCE, and they're proposing that it be changed to TCA. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on, if that's okay? Okay. Okay, so here's where things are a little lengthy, so I apologize in advance. Because Title 24A went into effect after the site-specific land use map amendment application was submitted, this application has to be reviewed using the review criteria in Title 24. So that's what you see on screen. The applicant provided detailed responses to each of the criteria you see on screen, and you can find those in the Criterion Compliance Narrative, which is included in the application materials, which is linked in your packet. I'm going to provide a summary, just to speed things up a little bit. So starting with Criteria A, the applicant states that they're seeking a rezoning of their property from TCE to TCA and cite the definition of TCE found in the code. They state that the property was designated as TCE so that a group of longstanding homeowners in the city's urban center could remain in place without having significant tax increases resulting from Town Center zoning changes. They provided a letter from a former Planning Commissioner that served during the time that TCE zone was created to show the intent of council related to the TCE zone. Moving on to Criteria B, the applicant states that the proposed change would bring the property into conformity with the nearby parcels, and note that there would be a small traffic impact on 228th, but that there's already driveway access via Southeast 6th Okay, responding to Criteria C, the applicant states that as a result of the Town Center redevelopment, they've lost their privacy, and they're now forced to sell. They cite Comprehensive Plan Policy LU 1.2, which talks about complementary and compatible development and smooth transitions between different land uses, and that this hasn't been what they experienced with the adjacent TCA property. The applicant is planning to eventually sell their property and believe that this change would allow future development to be in line with the Town Center plan and adjacent uses. Responding to Criteria D, the applicants provide an explanation of how their proposal addresses each of the 13 GMA planning goals. And then moving on to Criteria E, the applicant states that their property would have been zoned TCA, just as the adjacent property to the north, if they decided not to stay there. Additionally, they state that the proposal presents an opportunity for creating communities within Town Center and would not have an adverse impact on the main property owner to the south. They also state that several comprehensive plan policies and goals encourage development of single-family residences and non-resident uses with options that reduce the need to drive, which they believe that this proposal would help encourage. And in response to Criteria F, the applicant states that while this application is not related to a development project, the proposed change is in line with the capital improvements being implemented in the Town Center. And finally, they state that Criteria G would occur after application submittal, and the city is assuming that this refers to the various public comment opportunities. So moving on to Criteria A, under the review criteria specifically for site-specific land use map amendments, the applicants again cite Comprehensive Plan Policy LU 1.2 relating to promotion of complementary and compatible development and smooth transitions between different land uses, and they believe that the intention of their property was for it to eventually become TCA. And lastly, in response to Criteria B, they state that their proposal will not have an adverse impact on the main property owner to the south, which is the Sammamish Hills Lutheran So as previously mentioned, the docket request for the site-specific land use map amendment was submitted and docketed back in 2017, but because the site-specific land use map amendments were not included on the exemption list related to the building moratorium, review of the application couldn't begin until the moratorium was lifted. The applicant submitted their application in early March of 2019, and staff determined it to be complete on March 27th. A notice of application was then issued, and one comment was received during that comment period, which you'll see in Exhibit 1 of your packet. And one thing that we wanted to note was that while the application was under review, Title 24A was adopted, and this changed the process for the review. So under Title 24, the applicants were allowed to submit both their site-specific land use map amendment application together with their zone reclassification, and have those reviewed concurrently. Under Title 24A, those two processes were split into two separate processes. Under Title 24A, those two processes were split into two separate processes. So the city attorney notified the applicant's attorney of this process change and presented two options for moving forward in regards to CEPA review, because the application started as a concurrent application and then was separated into two different processes. So one option that was presented was to complete the CEPA review just for the site-specific land use map amendment, and then later do the required limited scope traffic impact analysis as part of the zone reclassification CEPA review. The second option was to complete the CEPA review for the site-specific land use map amendment and zoning reclassification concurrently, which included the required limited scope traffic impact analysis. And under this option, the traffic impact analysis would be completed prior to legislative review of the site-specific land use map amendment. The applicants chose to move forward with the first option of completing the CEPA review just for the site-specific land use map amendment. So following internal technical review, including consultation with our project consultants that you'll be hearing from shortly, the city made a determination of nonsignificance for the site-specific land use map amendment and issued a notice of CEPA determination in late June, and we had no comments received during that comment period. Following closure of the CEPA comment period and completion of staff analysis, a notice of public hearing was issued on September 4. The city did receive a number of questions and comments related to that public hearing notice, all of them that were received through today at 2:00 PM are shown in Exhibit 5 and 6 of your packet. And the other three that were received after that have been printed and provided to you this evening, and there's also copies over there for those who are interested. Again, the application that we're discussing tonight only changes how the parcel can be used in the future and in line with what you saw earlier. If the application gets approved by City Council, it's still likely going to be several years before any development occurs on the property. Additionally, any project getting approved there will still need to comply with the development regulations that are in place at the time that the land use application is submitted. So to start the review, staff working with our consultant reached out to the school district, the Sammamish Police Department, Puget Sound Energy, Sammamish Plateau Water, and Eastside Fire and Rescue to better understand the potential impacts that service area providers might have should this application be approved. And that information was gathered and integrated into our consultant's memo that you'll find in Exhibit 2. As part of the staff review, we also conducted an analysis of the Comprehensive Plan, the Town Center Subarea Plan, and Title 21B of the Sammamish Municipal Code to identify any changes that would be needed should the proposal be approved. And these findings are detailed in Exhibit 4 of your packet. The city also determined that a CEPA analysis was needed because we wanted to see how the proposal aligned with the Town Center final environmental impact statement, and if any further environmental review would be needed. So the city asked its land use consultant, AHBL, to do the CEPA analysis, and AHBL in turn contracted with Heffron Transportation, Inc., a qualified transportation impact consultant, to conduct an analysis of the traffic assessment that was submitted by the applicant. So AHBL's CEPA analysis looked at the development capacity in Town Center and within Town Center's southeast quadrant, the current conditions in Town Center, as well as potential transportation impacts and other project impacts. So I'm going to hand things over to AHBL and Heffron to share their findings a little bit more.
All right. Thank you, Miriam, and good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Brittany Port, and I am a land use planner at AHBL. And the city contracted us to do a third-party review of the CEPA checklist and the environmental analysis of the proposed land use map amendment and the zone reclassification, essentially to determine whether or not the Town Center final environmental impact statement included the Santoni property in its analysis, and whether or not further environmental review was warranted as part of this project. So can I just really briefly, I'm going to go through some of our kind of conclusions, and I'll talk through some of the analysis that we did of the final environmental impact statement and how the Santoni's project fits into that. Generally, just in reviewing the Town Center EIS, we did determine that the proposed zoning of TCI is consistent with the analysis that was done as part of the preferred alternative for the final environmental impact statement for the Town Center plan. I do want to also talk a little bit about the non-project review process, and Miriam has kind of alluded to that a little bit. But generally, when communities do a amendment to their comp plan, these are considered non-project actions under the State Environmental Policy Act. Project-level review would occur when an application for development is reviewed that triggers CEPA. So essentially, you have a development application that you can review the environmental impacts of. Medigation would typically be required at that stage, but as of right now, there is no project. What we are looking at is whether or not the proposed zoning would have any adverse environmental impacts, not the actual development that could occur. And as mentioned, the environmental impact statement that the city prepared as part of the Town Center did a full alternatives analysis regarding the proposed Town Center zoning. I'm going to let Heffron, or Michelle Brown with Heffron, talk really quickly about the limited scope traffic impact analysis before I move on to some of the specifics of the environmental impact statement.
Hello. I'm Michelle Brown with Heffron Transportation. I'm a Senior Transportation Engineer for our firm. And Heffron was asked by the city of Sammamish to review the traffic assessment that was completed for the Santoni property located within the Sammamish Town Center subarea. And just to note that at that time of our review, we were focused on the potential zoning reclassification from TCE to TCA. And so in our evaluation, we reviewed several of the documents, such as the Sammamish Town Center subarea, DEIS, the FEIS, the municipal code, the comprehensive plan, and the applicant's traffic assessment that was provided by TCI, and the CEPA checklist that was also provided for the Santoni property rezone application. And based on the documents, the proposed zoning, it could allow a development up to 38 residential units, mid-rise units, and then about 23,000 square feet of commercial retail or commercial space. And basically, our review was to answer two questions. The first one was, did the city of Sammamish Town Center subarea, DEIS, and FEIS account for additional trips that were generated, to be generated by this rezone? And the answer is yes. The traffic estimates that were done in the FEIS, if they were recalculated now based on the city's new or most recent traffic model, the trips under the land uses that were assumed in the EIS, plus the additional trips that are assumed with the rezone of the Santoni property, would be greater than the trips estimated for the model if it was currently done today. And then the second question is, should any additional analysis be performed to address the site-specific impacts? And there, we haven't talked about the quadrants, but if you can throw that up there. So the subarea is divided into four different quadrants. The Santoni property is located in the southeast quadrant, as shown up on the screen. And as I mentioned, if the model was redone today to estimate the trips generated by the Town Center, overall, the addition of the trips generated by the additional development on the Santoni property proposed, overall, they would be less, but in the southeast quadrant, it would actually be greater. So we recommended that at the land use and CEPA analysis, that additional evaluation be done for any property or any development that would be provided or proposed for the Santoni property. And that's about it, yeah.
Okay.
Since there's not a traffic analysis that can be evaluated at this time, so we're basically looking at these two elements. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll leave this up, but just kind of going back to a little bit what Michelle was talking about, the Town Center plan looked at the entire Town Center and evaluated a maximum buildout between 1,300 and 2,000 housing units. And then there were some limits on commercial space as well. The FEIS broke down the Town Center into four quadrants. The Santoni property is located within the southeast quadrant, and there were 362 housing units that were analyzed as part of that preferred alternative for the Town Center. The 2,000 housing units, that was a maximum buildout for the Town Center. However, when the eventual zoning went into place, only 1,656 units were actually allocated based on the maximum buildout of those parcels, subtracting out critical areas and roads. So there is capacity within the overall Town Center as it relates to the maximum amount of housing units that were evaluated in the environmental impact statement. So far, within the Town Center, only 326 units have been permitted, which is about 16% of the maximum development capacity of the Town Center. And we are halfway through the planning horizon for the Town Center plan that was envisioned. Generally, what our finding was, is that the rezone of the Santoni property to TCA would not introduce any new uses to the Town Center that had not previously been analyzed in the FEIS. Generally, when there are new probable significant adverse environmental impacts or new uses being proposed, you would do additional environmental analysis consisting of either supplemental EIS or an addendum to the EIS. But as these were housing units that were already considered as part of the environmental analysis, you'll see in the image on the left, the Santoni property was actually envisioned to be TC, or it was supposed to be the B zoning, which was proposed for townhomes. And that was carried forward into the Town Center plan, and as the applicant has, I think, mentioned, when the zoning went into place, it was put into reserve. So there was a change that happened once it was zoned. However, our task was just to review whether or not the environmental impacts of it being zoned for a higher density, higher intensity use were considered, and our findings were that they were. Generally, only going to provide you the environmental analysis and whether or not it was considered, and it's up to you guys to make that decision and for our staff to provide you that analysis.
So tonight, we're presenting two options for your consideration. The first is recommending the approval of the application as requested by the applicants, and the second is recommending the denial of the application. And before our presentation concludes, I just wanted to put back the review criteria from Title 24 for your consideration. You've now heard summaries of how the applicants responded to each of these criteria, and you've heard the staff findings. And so we wanted to hand things over to the applicants themselves to do their presentation before we open things up for questions. So I'm going to hand things over to Frank and Maureen Santoni. Thank you.
Microphone on now? Okay. So, good evening. I'm Frank Santoni. We'd like to tell you our story. To begin with, Maureen and I are not developers, nor are we working with a developer. We're just a retired couple doing this on our own and trying to get on with our lives. And this is not a site-specific project, as you heard, but just an application to change zoning as was always planned so that we could effectively sell our property. We've been working on this for over three years and are finally getting there. We never thought the process would have taken this long, but as you heard, the building moratorium put us on hold for a year. And the city had never done a rezone in the Town Center before, and they were developing the process as we went along. Several times, they apologized and asked for our patience as the process changed along the way. We have diligently done everything the city has asked. I'd like to talk a little more about the TCE zone, if we could put my presentation up. So this is our property. The Zone E is a reserve zone granted to four landowners in the Sammamish Hills Lutheran Church, reserve meaning preserving the opportunity for future development. The purpose for the Zone E was established by the City Council in 2008 after recommendations from the Planning Commission. Here are minutes from that meeting. It also became part of the municipal code. And this is right from the municipal code. The city wanted our property to be at a higher zoning, and in a compromised move, decided to create the TCE zone with the understanding it would be actualized to the higher and desired densities when the residents were ready. There was never any intent by the city to leave this property at one unit per acre for the future, as this density does not in any way reflect the ultimate plan for the Town Center. So one of the questions that's come up is, why ask for TCA? We actually consulted with the city's staff analysts at the time we were applying to get on the docket in 2017 as to what would be appropriate to ask for. We were told it would be reasonable to ask for similar zoning to the Ichido development to the north. We were also involved in Town Center development from the start, attending most meetings, charrettes, bus tours, et cetera. And had we not asked to be given consideration for our desire to stay in our home, our zoning would have been TCA. This is a small piece of property. It's 2.38 acres out of the 240 in the Town Center. And though it might seem obvious that a rezone of this property would have little impact, the city had AHBL do an independent environment review, and also asked us to have a traffic study completed, which you have already heard. There may be a misconception that this will add residential units not covered by the FEIS, but it does not. And from the AHBL review, I'm going to read this. This is right out of the review. The proposal is within the southeast quadrant of the Town Center, and the FEIS allocates 362 units to the southeast quadrant. A GIS analysis showed that when critical areas and their buffers are excluded, the maximum development capacity in the southeast quadrant, using the current allocated zoning with our lot as TCE, is only 257 units. The proposal could create, this proposal we have could create an additional 38 units under the allowed allocated zoning, which is still under the capacity identified in the FEIS. So we think it just makes sense for the city to take the opportunity to change the zoning of this property so that we can, so it can be an active part of the Town Center development. It aligns with the Town Center objective of being an eminently walkable community. It is a two-minute walk to bus stops on 228th Avenue, which have direct connections to Seattle and Esq. on Redmond Park and rides. With light rail coming to Marymore Park in 2024, it provides easy access to transit connections as they happen. It's a five-minute walk to both Skyline and Eastside Catholic High Schools, and a five-minute walk to City Hall, the library, Med Market, and dental and urgent care facilities. As I said before, we are not developers with deep pockets, and you might be interested in what this has meant to us personally and financially. Based on the latest King County tax assessment, our overall property value has gone down. It's just underutilized to have a single house on a large lot in the Town Center. We paid the city over $11,000 over the past two years to cover application fees, pre-application meetings, studies which they commissioned to be done, and we also pay for the city lawyer fees associated with our application. On top of that, we've had to engage our own lawyer to get us through the maze of this process, as well as a study, as paid for a study the city said we should have done as part of our application package. If you add it all up, we are approaching $40,000 for what we originally thought would be just a paperwork exercise. All of this and the funds to rebuild our house is coming out of our retirement savings. So this comp plan amendment is in the best interest of all involved. It allows the city to develop the Town Center as envisioned, and allows property owners to sell their land and relocate elsewhere in the city. Now I'd like to turn it over to Maureen for the rest of our presentation.
Thank you for being here and taking the time to go over this. First, I'll put a picture up. Hope I can work this. What do I do? There it is. Okay. This is our house. We've lived in it for 38 and a half years. I imagine there are not many in this room who can say that they've lived in the same house in Sammamish for that long, or even in Sammamish, for that matter. We designed the house and had it built. It is just across the road. For all the years before the Ichido development came, it was quiet and private. The house sits back from 228th, about an acre. Not a lot of people knew we were there. Our children grew up in the house. We had no idea for many years all the changes that would come. This is the view, excuse me, this is the view to the south now and the way it has always been. The Lutheran Church sits on the other side, their parking lot, their preschool. You can't see any of it. We had a similar view to the north. There was one single-story house built in the 1940s you couldn't see. There were lots of trees, cedars, maples, alders, and huge laurels. Now, all that has changed. During construction, all vegetation was removed. During construction, all vegetation was removed. We suffered through the dust and the noise. We had asked for 50-foot buffers years ago during all the planning meetings, but were given 20. We thought buffers would protect us, but in reality, it was just the distance from the property line to the building. There are now eight-foot by 10-foot cement patio slabs all the way down within the buffer. That is the fence there. That's the property, the property line. The bushes and trees planted around them don't even come up to the fence. We knew we could not stay. Oh, sorry, I want too many. This is a picture from our front porch that shows the master bedrooms looking over on us on one level and the living rooms and kitchens below. At night, we see into these rooms, TVs on, people making dinner, lights coming from so many units. While under construction, we took this picture from inside one of the units. The view is not their backyard, but our house and everything we do. Front door, back door, whether our cars are there, if there is a package at the front door, it is like living in a fishbowl. And there are actually 15 townhouses from townhouses that look directly at us. If we are out gardening or on our front porch, people are watching, or we hear whole conversations from their patios. Our sense of security is gone. When we are away, we actually have someone move cars around so it looks like we are there. The UPS driver is afraid to leave packages because we are now so visible to many households. We love our house. We made the painful, difficult decision that we could no longer live with these surroundings. Sammamish is home. We tried to have the house moved, actually had two companies come. After not believing the first, you said it was impossible due to fiber optic powerlines that couldn't be adjusted. So we got out our original plans, all afraid at the edges, and decided to rebuild. We found a lot about a mile away. It alone costs more than twice our original house. We found a wonderful builder, also from Sammamish. We thought this part we're doing now would be over last year, but with the building moratorium and continual delays, we are dealing with this now. And the rebuilt house, we were ready to move in in about a month. This is not what we expected to be doing in our retirement. We would like to get on with our lives. You know, for almost the first half-mile of the town center boundary at Southeast 8th to the SAM apartments down on 1st, along 228th on the east side, there are only three remaining single-family homes, ours and two rentals. On the west side, there are no single-family homes until you are out of the town center on the north boundary. If you drive down the streets within this area, there are many boarded-up homes, houses left to fall apart. Here are a few pictures. There are also empty lots where the houses have already been torn down. We knew some of these families over the years. They were allowed to sell. From these pictures, it is obvious there was no attempt to save or to rent these houses. The value was in the land. We would like to be able to do the same. There's no point in having a single-family home in a multifamily area. We feel like the last man standing. Thank you again. We hope you support our rezone application.
Thank you to both of you. All right. Anything else before we ask questions? Okay, I just kind of kindly remind all of you that this is the questions, time to ask questions and get questions answered. The deliberation is later, so let's try to, in an effort to manage time, keep it to the questions now and the deliberation later. Okay? So who has questions?
Can you remind me again when the Ichijio homes were built and completed?
I'm going to have Kelly answer that because it happened before I came here.
I can give you a range because it's been a long construction process for that project. I want to say 2016 through 2018, and that's an approximation.
Do you have more questions, Rutuja?
Oh, I'll come back to them later.
I'll ask just a couple while everyone collects their thoughts. Is there any compliance issues which have not been met by their request? In other words, is there any strictly objective compliance with code, submitting of plans, force, you know, checking CEPA, that sort of thing? Have they met all of the compliance criteria, legal, I don't, that's really not the right word, but compliance criteria for the request?
Yeah, so part of our process in reviewing the application, it was, as it was submitted, reviews completion to make sure that every single item that's required has been included. So that's what the notice of application kind of signifies. So yes, everything has been submitted as required, and all the processes that are required have been followed.
And another question, I was trying to follow the discussion on the units and the traffic. It sounded like what you said was that at the maximum buildout, it would not be in compliance with the current, I'm not sure I'm going to say this right, but it would not be in compliance. I'm not sure that saying with the current level of service and, and traffic model is correct, but it sounded like that was the case. And my question is really then, does that mean that if someone were to buy this property and develop it, they would run into that? And, and what is the solution? Is it mitigation? Or could they say, we won't build to the maximum, but we'll build to three-quarters of the maximum, and that gets under the, the traffic limit that causes us to be out of compliance?
So for the, for the entire sub-area of the town center, if, based on the trips that were estimated for the land uses that were approved, if the, compared those, those trips with the city's most current model, the model would, would estimate fewer trips than what was evaluated for the FEIS. So as a whole, the FEIS is a worst-case condition, I guess, than if, you can put it that way. We were looking at if just the southeast sector or southeast quadrant, that quadrant with the development that, if it were the 38 residential units and the 23,000 square feet that has been estimated that could be fit on this property, they, that would generate additional trips than what was evaluated for just the southeast quadrant. Overall, then, when they're leaving, if the trips leaving the, the town center, all the offsite impacts would be covered under the FEIS. But it's just like the local access and local intersections, control and operations at the intersections within the southeast quadrant, those should be evaluated again with any development that occurs on anywhere on and within the town center. So it's not just specific to this property.
Okay. I think I understand.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's to Kelly or to the bench here, but it was on our current concurrency model, and it seems, if I'm right, at the council level, they are having an audit on our current model as it stands. And also, I had noticed in, in the report from Heffron, I think it was, that they talked about the trips that were generated was 105, but those were at PM peak. And I know in our model, we've gone to some lengths to do AM and PM. So am I wrong in thinking that that's an older concurrency model that was used? It gets very confusing when you start talking about the traffic generation. So are we, are we, is the model that was used from that report the older one? And then will a newer one be run again? Is that how that works when there is a plan in place?
David Pyle, Community Development. So that's a great question. Concurrenty here in the city, due to the discussions we've had with our city council, has been a bit of a moving target because there have been adjustments being made while we were evaluating this proposal. So the, the process that was used was that we applied what we knew to be the formerly adopted standards at the time. So there have been some changes made since then related to, as I understand it, how we model concurrency. So what would need to happen is that if, if the application was to go through the rezone process, as I understand it, it would have to then have a transportation impacts analysis done at that point, that the applicant here deferred that to a later point in time because that's, that's a larger investment on their part. So if this is something that is not going to be considered as a land use map change, which is more of a conceptual map change, that would then authorize or allow them to proceed through the rezone process, they didn't want to invest in that. And, and that's, that's, I think Miriam brought that up when she talked about the process and about how our process has changed while we have been considering this. One thing to note about cities' codes and the requirements within is that you, you don't vest a process, and our city attorneys have been very clear about that, that if you are in the middle of the review of a certain type of application and the process changes, meaning the radius of mailing around a site for the purpose of notification changes, you have to use the new radius. You can't retain the old radius, for example, but that the substantive components of the code remain intact and apply to the project. So that's why we're using the criteria from Title 24, and that's why we're using the process from the newly adopted code. So what we're tasked with here is to consider this under the old code, if you will. And what, what I'm trying to explain there is, is that things do change here, but we try to apply, or we're required to apply the substantive requirements in the code at the time of application for the duration of the, the review cycle of what we're looking at, if that makes sense.
So the EIS, the FEIS that was done, that was in 2007, so it's almost 12 years ago. And I know you said, you know, it didn't have to be done again because there was no significant change to the proposal. Was it because the FEIS was done for the southeast quadrant as, as, you know, Zone B and not E? So what would trigger having another environmental study of that piece of land again?
So I think kind of just like the, the thing to, to explain is the, the process of developing the town center plan and the eventual town center zoning that was applied to these properties can take a, a long time. So the FEIS was, first, there was a draft EIS. It considered alternatives. When a preferred alternative was selected that either had the least amount of adverse impacts or mitigation was attached that therefore made it the preferred alternative. When that was selected, the town center plan was written to, to implement the, the proposal as envisioned in the, in the FEIS. Then the city had to write a zoning code that administered the goals and the future land use designation of the town center plan. So things have sort of evolved, and I think that's where some of the time that has elapsed in, in this can cause a little bit of confusion. But at the time that the FEIS was written, that property was envisioned as being town centers, or, sorry, townhomes and apartments, I believe. When the town center plan was written, I think it was shown as low-intensity townhomes. And then the zoning applied the TCE, which was a reserve. They then kind of shifted some capacity around, so the overall 2,000 cap was still retained. However, the, the discussion of quadrants was sort of, it wasn't as specific as it was in, in the FEIS, so it's hard to track things back and forth. So the overall capacity of the town center remains the same. The maximum buildout remains the same. It doesn't remove any development capacity from any other properties because you're not hitting that 2,000-unit cap. And there was actual discussion in the town center plan as well about if the 2,000-unit cap were getting close to being hit, the city would, the city council would reevaluate whether or not that cap needed to be expanded. So I think, kind of just going back to your question, why additional environmental analysis is not necessary, and I think Michelle kind of hit it, is that the, the FEIS really considered all of the environmental impacts that could occur if there was a full buildout of the town center at 2,000 units. So you're not required to do any more environmental analysis until you want to exceed the development capacity that was envisioned in the FEIS.
So, but the rezoning or, or the change in the land use for this property would then exceed the 2,000 limit? No?
It would not.
It would still be part of the 2,000?
Yeah, because the, the allocated density per the zoning, when it was eventually transitioned into a zoning code, did not hit the 2,000-unit cap. So it was about 1,600 units, give or take, that were allocated to the properties that are within the town center. So if you add the additional 38 units by rezoning the Santoni property to TCA, you're still below the 2,000-unit cap.
For the EIS study?
Yes.
Thank you. That's an important part. And I'm wondering, Miriam, if you could bring up the picture of the property, because the other question that I have is on the tree retention policy.
Oh, that's their presentation.
I just wanted to see the
The photo?
The photo, which, the aerial photo that shows the property along with the Ichijio homes.
Oh, okay, that is
I think you had that. So can you just walk us through what the tree retention policy would be if the land, the land use changes, and what percentage is needed to be retained for a particular
I just happened to look this up from another commissioner's question. If this, if this parcel was changed from an E to an A, the A-zone requires that you retain all trees within the critical areas and their associated buffers. There is not a tree retention percentage requirement outside of the critical areas. Our A-zones within the town center are our most urban zones, and to accommodate that type of urban design, at the time that the tree retention code was written, there was not a requirement to retain trees outside of critical areas and their associated buffers.
And are there any critical areas in this?
From the materials that were submitted by the applicant, no.
Thanks.
I just want to point out that at each of your seats, you have an overview of each of the different zones within town center, similar to what you saw on screen, and there is some tree retention information on the second page of that.
All right. Thank you.
I, just to add, I want to make sure that people recognize that, correct however I say this, if it's incorrect, but the tree retention policies within the town center are completely and entirely separate from the tree retention policies, which were actually fairly recently changed, maybe a year ago, for areas outside of the town center. So those are two different policies within the code.
You are correct.
Eric?
Thanks, staff, for the presentation, and thanks for the public for the comments. I was wondering if you could go back to the FEIS zoning town center map that I think was part of this. So I think it was said that the Santoni property was originally part of a B, was originally planned to be B, and it was put into the reserve instead of B, right?
So that's what the FEIS studied it as.
And my understanding of, of B zones and C zones, as you look at the rest of the map, is they're intended to be kind of a buffer to the surrounding areas, right? And so the trees retention and that kind of stuff, the 25% tree retention as is currently required, would, would help with that. I was wondering, I think the comment, the public comment said that there was a staff member that said that they should go after the A-zone, and I was just wondering why that and not, it seems like it might have been more natural to have them go after B instead of A.
I'm looking at Kelly because that was not me.
And it's hard to show here on this map. Four of the parcels just north of Southeast Fourth Street, on the corner of Southeast Fourth Street and 228th Avenue Southeast, right there, there's one, two, three, four. Half of those are B, half of those are A. And the Town Center Code does allow through the UZDP land use review process that a portion of the B can be used as commercial, and I, I can't give you those exact numbers because I don't have the application in front of me. And that, that would be reviewed as part of their, that land use application, and it was reviewed as such. But there are stipulations in the code that, that do allow commercial use, limited commercial use within the B-zone, and that is exactly what TRF did when they submitted their land use proposal.
Anyone else with questions? Mark?
I'm not sure where to direct this, but we're given two choices, either approve or disapprove. And, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of wondering why we can't also have a third choice to recommend, like a TCB. What's the process for that?
That would be making a motion. So what our code does not clearly explain, what our Town Center Plan does not clearly explain, is that process of when the Town Center E-zones should be considered for rezone. It does say that it is a future, as the Santonis pointed out, that the E-zone is a reserve area, but it doesn't tell us when we should actually start considering that. So that is why you are not getting a recommendation from staff. So it would be up to the Planning Commission. You can either recommend to approve, recommend to deny, recommend another zone. It is within your advisory role to do what you think is right.
Kelly, can I ask, though, if we, if we were to do that, excuse me, if we were to do that, what does that mean administratively? Because it's an application for a specific purpose, and if we recommend something that's not part of that application, does the application have to start over, or can it be just a decision made by the City Council? Even though it's, it's not in compliance with the application, it can still be done anyway? I mean, that makes sense to me, but I want to be careful not to cause administrative, there's been plenty of administrative effort on this already, and I don't want to create more without recognizing that.
Sure, I think the Planning Commission is definitely under your preview to make the recommendation you see fit, and if that is a different zone, absolutely, and this is for consideration of the City Council. For a site-specific land use map amendment to our comp plan, that is a City Council decision. So with your recommendation, what that would be, they would just, again, like I said, consider it, and then we'll be giving them the same information for them to review, and ultimately, it will be up to the City Council.
Kelly, I have a continuing, of a continuance of a question. So it, it just looks at that southeast quadrant that is zoned E, but can somebody with a A-zone or a B-zone come in and say, we want our property to be rezoned? In the same vein as, like, you know, this particular instance is being, or the application is to be rezoned from E to an A, can B-zone, somebody owning a land with B-zone come and say, hey, we want our land to be zoned A, and this is our application? Can we do that? Or can somebody come and do that?
Yes, through the site-specific comprehensive, or site-specific map amendment process, the process that, and actually starting with the docket process, they can. So submitting a docket proposal.
Okay, and then in the comprehensive plan, do we have, or even in the Town Center Plan, I know there's a definition of, you know, what Zone E is, and it, it says there's allowance for future development. Does it have any language to do with future upzoning or downzoning?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I do want to clarify one quick thing between the FEIS and the Town Center Plan. So as our consultant, Brittany, spoke to previously, the EIS studied 2,000 units, and they broke them up through the different quadrants. The Town Center Plan took that and allocated that density to the zones, and that density, the allocated density is 1,646 units. The difference between the 1,646 units and 2,000 is 200, or is 344, and that is actually the Affordable Housing Pool Incentive Program. So that's how you get to the 2,000 units, and that's all captured in the Town Center Plan and in our Town Center Code.
All right. Anybody else with more questions? Okay, then we're going to move on to the public hearing. So just as a reminder, the public hearing, and I do have a, a list here that we'll go through the folks that, I think I can read everybody's name without my reading glasses. We'll go through those folks first, and then others are welcome to come up as well, but please, if you're not on the list, I need to know your name, and for the record, you have to state your address so that we can, we can capture that. Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing on this particular agenda topic, and Nancy's first.
Here?
I didn't even notice. Sure, let's take five minutes.
Thank you.
There's quite a few people there. Maybe we should make it 10. There's only a couple bathrooms, so let's call it 10 minutes. All right, Nancy's first.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Nancy Anderson. My, my address is on the record. So I'll preface this, oops. I think I'm on, okay. I'll preface this with the fact that I'm not speaking to the property owners right now or to their issues, per se, in this, this quasi-docket request. I'm addressing the optics, the lack of transparency. The city has an attitude, in my humble opinion, that this is no big deal, that this is desirable and we should do it, and it's a done deal. Ms. Lechner, I know you're doing a good job, but with all due respect, this is not a boring meeting. This is outrageous, and I have a real problem with it. That's why I came here tonight. I skipped my dinner, so in a nod to sell ya, I'm hangry. I'm hungry and I'm angry. So site-specific, so why hasn't then this ever been done before? I sat with you. I've watched every Planning Commission meeting even prior to my appointment. Planning Commission in the city of Sumamish is not land use issues. In other cities, yes, Planning Commission, and I went to conferences with them, fellow commissioners from other cities. They listen in meetings like this to property, you know, zoning issues, you know? But our city has the model, which other cities do too, of having the staff review land use and make those decisions, or at least those recommendations, and pass them to City Council. Our Planning Commission isn't like this. I don't know why this is here. Now, you know, I know you'll say that some rules have changed and have put in, been in, put into place, and I appreciate Scott Hamilton as a former Planning Commissioner for putting forth those amendments and those changes to how, the title that was referred to before. Okay, now I know, though, why those changes are in place, and the optics of it are suspicious. It's one landowner. And again, it's nothing against the Santories. I remember they presented this three years ago during a docket request process. Eric, you remember. Same pictures, same description, and with a plea to be put on the docket for the following year's comprehensive plan review, and the city said no. And there were other, less articulate property owners that stepped forward, in groups or individually, and said, please put us on the docket, and here's why. And the city said no. The Planning Commissioner did the right thing, I, I think. I'd have to look back at the tapes, but the, the City Council doesn't listen to our recommendations. I mean, they changed their mind. I mean, it's, it's a gesture to, to tell them, this is what a majority is saying from Planning Commission, but our history has shown, there's a disregard for what this body does. And I think that's very disrespectful for your time spent here. So I digress. I think, I, I won't go into the minutiae as to what happened during that period of time that I was a Planning Commissioner and the result of that docket request issue. But here's the irony. A week and a half ago, I was trying to find out how to remove six trees on our heavily wooded property. We've got hundreds of trees. My husband plants 30 trees in the last, you know, 10 years, probably. He'll correct me when I get home. Sorry, honey. I'll, I'm sure I got the number wrong. The fact is, we've got 0.81 acre, and it took two weeks, and I finally had to call David Pyle because staff members were giving me different answers. First, I needed an arborist, then I didn't need an arborist, then I needed a permit, then I didn't need a permit, and there were two different staff members that were giving me two different answers. Now, if I have to go through this for a little tree removal process, I mean, the fact that the Santories have a hearing? It's, the irony is amazing. I, I, so I find the rule change, with all due respect to, to Scott, just suspicious because right now in our city, there's such a divide. You got the, the perceived developer community, and then you got all of us who have sat, stood up here for years, saying, take a look at reasonable growth targets. Take a look at what the PSRC and the GMA have given, and you have negotiated with them as a city. Take a look at those numbers and see what we can do to address infrastructure. And I think all of you here and City Council members have said, of course, that's very important. Then why is this atrocity on 248th happening with that clear cut? You know, the, the thing is, years ago, I was at a campaign event in the last election cycle, four years ago, and I was at an event, and a, a City Council member that was there, who was serving at the time but no longer serves on City Council, came up to me during this event. Never has this person ever introduced eye to eye, but again, I had been emailing the city all these years. This person looked at me in this event without introducing and said, you send too many emails. And I was embarrassed, and I, I understood what her point was. It was, you, your message gets lost. The problem is, I tried that, I tried that way for the first five years of our incorporation, and I wouldn't get a response, and these same issues continue. So yeah, by 2015, I was, here's this, here's this, here's this. So, I mean, we, we have to look at the optics here. There are questions, there are smart people in this community watching tonight, looking online, we don't have a newspaper anymore, so it's dubious where some of this data is coming from and the rumors that are spread. But smart people like you and me are starting to say, I don't think that's entirely accurate what you just posted on Facebook or Nextdoor or anywhere else. And I think that gives me so much hope for the future of the city in our preservation of character of our neighborhoods, because finally, I think, people who have complained for years, like I have, finally feel like they have a voice in even just binding together and saying, let's come up with strategies for how the city, the Planning Commission, the City Council can better reflect the needs and wants of a majority of people out there who are stuck in traffic and are sick of seeing the trees go. So, yeah, I, I know, I've, I've gone on a lot. I just, I want, let's see, I want to end by saying, again, with all due respect, I'm a taxpayer, and I hear the public comment while I was in your position and also on City Council meetings. I, as a taxpayer, I can't be responsible for
Please wrap it up, Nancy.
I can't be responsible for replenishing retirement funds that have been depleted. And I, with all due respect, my taxes have to go into fixing the roads, fixing the infrastructure of stormwater. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Nancy. Next on the list, Patrick?
Well, there apparently is your public comment. Good job. See, now, next time, you can come and make all kinds of comments. Karen Herring is next.
Hi, Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. I have never met the Santonis, but I have a lot of friends who used to be your neighbors, and they have fat pockets now because they took the money and left. So I'm here to speak for them. Please let them change the zone of the property that is going to be developed anyway. It's being developed right in front of their faces, and that's not what they need. They've spent a lot of money to find somewhere else to go, and I think we should help them go there. I hope you think so, too. Thank you so much. Please recommend the zone change to our City Council. I'll be doing that. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Next is Mike, sorry, is that Patterson or Peterson? I should know.
My name is Mike Patterson. I live at 23018 Southeast 8th Street, which is right in Zone E, two houses down from the Lutheran Church on Southeast 8th. So I know the Santonis. My wife and children, we moved into Sumamish about a little over 16 years ago, and that just were widening to 228th. And we thought we'd found the home, that's what we're going to stay, we're going to live in, raise the kids, retire, went through, got involved, found out about the Town Center, which completely surprised us, and that the city basically wanted all of our land, all of the homes that were there. There's basically four homes, three left that aren't, that are still in Zone E, and along with the Santonis. And we've, we met with Scott Hamilton, a few others, at Stan and Ellie Bump's home, and Ellie's still here. She's moved away since Stan's passed away, but we had a passion to want to stay here, live here, not be forced out. And when we found this house, we thought, wow, the Town Center's going to be built around us, this will be great, but then there was a move to want our homes, the land. They wanted this, this is part of what they had envisioned for the Town Center. So I find it somewhat ironic that now, when one of us wants to sell the property, they've had to spend three years and over $40,000 to try to do that. Whereas before, so where's the city helping them? I look at the process, this commission that you go through to try to get this rezoned, and I'm stunned at the amount of time and money it's costing to do this. There's got to be a better way, a faster way to do this. I'd, I'd really, you know, ask, revisit this process. I look at a lot of processes at my job, we're constantly looking how we can do better. This process, to me, is broken. I know you've had moratoriums to deal with, but for crying out loud, it shouldn't take three years to let them leave with the property, the value that it's had, they can get right now through selling through a developer. It makes me want to start to sell the process right now myself, and I don't have any intent to desire to leave.
which is right in Zone E, two houses down from the Lutheran Church on Southeast 8th. So I know the Santonies. My wife and children moved into Samamish about a little over 16 years ago. And just were widening to 228th. And we thought we'd found the home, that's where we're going to stay, we're going to live in, raise the kids, retire. Went through, got involved, found out about the town center, which completely surprised us. And that the city basically wanted all of our land, all of the homes that were there. There's basically four homes, three left that are still in Zone E and along with the Santonies. And we met with Scott Hamilton, a few others, at Stan and Ellie Bump's home. And Ellie's still here. She's moved away since Stan's passed away. But we had a passion to want to stay here, live here, not be forced out. And when we found this house, we thought, "Wow, the town center's going to be built around us. This will be great." But then, there was a move to want our homes, the land. They wanted this. This is part of what they had envisioned for the town center. So I find it somewhat ironic that now, when one of us wants to sell the property, they've had to spend three years and over $40,000 to try to do that. Whereas before, so where's the city helping them? I look at the process, this commission that you go through to try to get this rezoned, and I'm stunned at the amount of time and money it's costing to do this. There's got to be a better way, a faster way, to do this. I'd really revisit this process. I look at a lot of processes at my job. We're constantly looking how we can do better. This process, to me, is broken. I know you've had moratoriums to deal with. But for crying out loud, it shouldn't take three years to let them leave with the property, the value that it's had they can get right now through selling through a developer. It makes me want to start to sell the process right now myself. And I don't have any intent, desire to leave right now. But I feel like, I've got to hurry up and start doing this and start saving, get a second job so I can afford to have the rezoning looked at for my property. And we were here in January when they were looking at trying to rezone all of the property in E, just trying to take the study and to see what it's going to take. And we came and we said, "No, we support, just do it for the Santonies." Little did we know that what the expense was and the stress. I've walked over the Ichijo townhomes when we were building them. I walked up to the top floor with my wife, looked down, and we saw Maureen in the kitchen. So I can validate what they were saying. It's just, and there were no buffers. There aren't, as the picture showed. It was just terrible what's been done to them as long as they've been here to this city. They're still staying within Samamish, not even leaving because they love this city. But yet, they can't leave where they're at to go to this new place. So I'm here to support them and ask that you do, allow them to upzone their property and give them a chance to live the rest of their lives where they want to live, where they won't be bothered, and have to deal with the bureaucracy that they've had to deal with the past three years. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next on the list is Mr. Scott Hamilton.
Donovan just wanted to say amen. Is that--
Sure.
I never signed in.
Oh, penalty points.
I won't have much to say. My name is Donovan Albrecht. I've lived here since 1976. That's more than Santonies. And--
Address.
22605 Southeast 4th Street, Samamish, Washington. 98074. How's that?
Perfect.
Good. Anyway, those folks have lived here a long time and did a lot for this country, this city. I remember being here when there was groundbreaking ceremony what happened. I've got one of them little gold shovels in the plastic that they gave away when they broke ground for this place. Anyway, I'm not a very good speaker, but Santonies are very good people and have done a lot for this area. And I make a motion that it should be rezoned so that they can get what is needed. I know you are good people, and you'll do the job right. Thank you.
Thanks, Donovan. Okay, Scott.
Really?
We couldn't keep you down, anyway, I know. So go ahead.
All right, Scott Hamilton. 9721 Northeast Christmas Circle, Bainbridge Island. I used to be a planning commissioner, and in fact, was on the planning commission when we created the Town Center Plan. So I thought that this might be useful for me to come over and offer institutional knowledge. I know that this particular time is not where we have interaction, but if during your deliberations you would like to pose any questions for institutional knowledge, I'll be in the audience. As I look through the packet that you have before you tonight and the comments that came in from citizens, and then there were also some comments on Facebook, which are not part of the record, it was clear to me that there was a general misunderstanding on the part of the public and as part of the record as to what was going on here. I'm frankly puzzled by the previous comment that there was a lack of transparency because indeed, this whole Zone E reserve tract was well discussed during the process. Now, in this room, there's myself, Paul Stickney, Donovan, and maybe Larry Crandall, who were there in the beginning of the Town Center process. Everybody else wasn't there, including the staff. As the record shows from the Santonies and from the staff itself, the whole concept behind Zone E was to protect these particular property owners from being taxed out of their homes under the highest and best use concept that the King County Assessor uses when it assesses on zoning. This was discussed in the planning commission. It was agreed as a recommendation to the city council that this reserve tract, Zone E, would be created. The council agreed. They adopted it. They codified it. So the policy and legislative intent has been described here tonight. Some of the questions that have come up from you, one of the questions had to do with, "Could you recommend a B-zone instead of an A-zone?" And the answer is, as the staff indicated, yes. Because this property right next door here, the, I forget what the heck it's called, but right next door, the daycare school. When the planning commission went through its entire process, we forgot to make any recommendation about this at all. In the transmittal letter, we said, "This should be a Zone D, which you see on the maps." And the city council made that decision to do a Zone D, which is a less than Zone C. So yes, you can make some changes should you desire. It is important to understand here, and Commissioner Endepoor, this goes directly to some of your questions. This zoning change, from whether it's Zone E to B or to A, is not anything that wasn't contemplated at any time in the EIS, in the final EIS, and the whole concept. There is nothing at all here that's new, nothing at all here that exceeds any traffic study, nothing at here at all that exceeds the planned residential and commercial. This was all taken care of in that final EIS study. I don't understand the staff's suggestion that even under the new traffic concurrency, when you take into account the net density that would be allowed, which is 250 versus 350, that the southeast quadrant could possibly exceed traffic counts. I don't understand that at all. You reduce 100, you add 39, and you're going to exceed? That just doesn't pass the sniff test. There was a question on here about why the-- oh, why wasn't this requested as a B-zone instead of A-zone? I certainly can't speak to whatever the staff may have recommended, but I can tell you that this was a wedding cake concept where the most intense zoning would be in the center, and you would work your way out to create buffers. Now, what is disturbing here, and this is not unusual for what actually has occurred with the development of the town zone, Town Center, is that the planning commission recommended 50-foot buffers. And the Santonies testified tonight that this is down to the 20-foot buffer, and the patios are within the buffer. We had recommended to the city council that along 228th Street, that there be 50-foot or 100-foot setbacks so that you would not have development right on the sidewalk. That was changed. I take it that's what happened here with the buffers as well. You know, getting back to the whole Zone E thing, we, the city, made a promise to the Santonies, to the Bumps, to the Pattersons, and I forget the name of the fourth landowner, that we would protect them from the tax increases and that when the time come, they could revert to the intended underlying zoning of Zone A or Zone B. This was a promise that was made. As I say, it was a policy that was adopted. It was something that was codified in the city code. And there is nothing here that was not transparent-- Nancy, where did she leave? Okay. There's nothing here that was not transparent about this. So that statement really confuses me. So I will stick around in case you have any other institutional type of questions. Oh, and one last thing in my last 50 seconds. On page 21 of the presentation from staff, there are no sensitive areas on the San Toney property. There's no buffer going into the San Toney property. This is an unremarkable piece of land. It has trees, no question about it, but there is nothing remarkable about this land. No steep slopes, no buffers, no sensitive areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, that's the end of the list. Would anyone else like to make public comment on this topic?
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue, Northeast, in Samamish. First, I do want to, I attend a large number of meetings because there are issues with steep slopes and other things and errors in the code. And I mostly speak to stormwater. But I'm going to speak on this for Town Center. The city had the idea to have Town Center. The reason we needed Town Center is the Growth Management Act said, "Hey, you're going to get growth. And if you don't have a Town Center, all that development's going to get up in everybody's neighborhood, and you are going to have too many big houses and too many students and too many cars driving." So what you do to address that and make things work better is you make a Town Center. And you want high density kind of closer together. And yes, you're going to have less trees and stuff because the people that live there are going to walk. They're going to ride transit. They might have an apartment. They might be divorced. They might be a young person coming in. They might be a fireman or a teacher. And they might want to live in the area for workforce housing. And if we ever get hit with a big earthquake, you're going to want the people, like the firemen, the police, and the water district living up here because they're not going to be able to drive here from Everett if there's a big earthquake. So we need those things, and that's the idea of Town Center. And when it was mapped out, Santories lived in it. And they didn't know when Town Center would build, but they didn't want to throw people like them out. They said, "We don't want to throw them out of their house. So we'll get this transition thing for them." Because if you put it at the highest best use, they wouldn't have been able to afford the taxes, and that would have forced them out. So it was a transition time. And they've lived there. And they've proven that with Town Center development next door, it doesn't make any sense to have an R1 or R4 or something six house. It shouldn't be residential. I believe that Ichijo next to them is R16, and there might be incentives for affordable housing. That's what should be built on the Santories' house. They've taken their building plans for the existing house that they live in. They're building somewhere else in the city, and that totally makes sense. But to use that property in any other way doesn't make sense. It's part of Town Center. It was planned that way. It was a transition thing. And on Southeast 4th, where there's a lot of construction going on right now, the city went through or has gone through the formal process to actually have to condemn those homes. If they don't use eminent domain and they don't do condemnation, if they can't agree with people, they will. And that costs the city money. So you've got somebody here who says, "Okay, we're finally ready to leave" because they've lived there since 2000 to 2018 for 10 years. It's time to let that happen. It doesn't make sense to do anything else. I understand there is an A/B confusion, but I think it should be adjacent to what it's adjacent to. And the A makes sense to go with it. And then the Lutheran church, I've walked on both sides and seen it. A lot of the trees are actually on that side. It really won't be impacted by that, so you're not going to have it. And there really aren't a lot of other houses this is happening to. It's really them left. I wanted to speak to Nancy Anderson. I love her, and she's on the planning commission. But you got some things wrong. When you're on the planning commission, they didn't listen to you a lot. So I just used to go to the city council meetings because they just changed their mind into different things. But Lyman Howard, the former city manager, he really liked the inputs that I gave. And he asked me, he said, "I need you to hit the planning commission first so they can hear it, they can discuss it, and then those recommendations go forward." And they see me almost every meeting that they have. I miss a few of them. They do listen. They do write things down. They ask really good questions. You guys are doing a good job. And you're getting things that, when they get recommended to council, if council isn't sure, or if they want to steer from that, they do use your recommendations. So your recommendations have become very important. Now, council can change that, and they can make other things. But it is important to go through this process. And I will speak also to the docket process. I have a very small docket to get a legend on a map, which is finally going through in two other changes. That took three years because the first year of dockets, everybody was there, and the city said no to all the people that applied except the city stuff. And it was so unfair and just like crazy, and it was even bad for staff, that Miriam came along. And SMC 24 has been written into 24A with a lot of public input. You guys reviewed it. A lot of the things that I stumbled across or Santories stumbled across have been changed. So the process is better. It really should come through you like the other things. And there can be other things that get added in. But if you want to change a city process, that's years and years and years. So we did change the city process. It's a lot better. And the city also has to allow and anna review of the comp plan. And they have to allow changes. And with the new thing that's there, you can actually go online anytime. That was one of my feedbacks is, "Hey, do I have to have the one date and be in town? Or can I do it anytime?" You can do it anytime. And there's a cutoff date, which is August 5th. That worked very well this year. I've submitted two dockets. The other thing they did is when you have comp plan changes or development regulation changes, you have to go through it. So we're doing that. So these people have done everything that they're supposed to do. They're not doing it because they're trying to make a bunch of money. They physically can't live there anymore because of Town Center. They're doing all they can to get out of it. The city is not spending money to have to do condemnation and eminent domain to get their property, which is needed for Town Center. It's costing them money. And it just really seems like this needs to move forward with the, "Yes, let it be Zone A. Make your full recommendation to council." And I don't see anything wrong with that. I also do a lot of steep slopes, wetlands. I've looked at the maps. And they're higher than the next parcel that's there. You're not seeing problems with that. I just don't see any problem in doing it. So I hope that you will deliberate, you guys ask great questions, take the public input, make your decision, make your recommendation, have it go forward to city council. And then I hope it will be that you allow them to do what was always intended, as Scott spoke so well to. Thank you.
I move that we extend the tonight's meeting till 8:50.
Second.
It's been moved in second to extend to 8:50. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Thank you. Next.
My name's Kent Trine. I'm at 1825 East Lake Samamish Parkway, Southeast. For the Santonies, a gentleman from 1976 who's on your property. You moved here, same reason why I did. I have a beautiful piece of property. I love it. Would love to, it's one level. I could stay until I'm 85 or maybe 103 because that's how Jiminy Cricket said I could live, too, if I play it safe, right? Black and white TV or color for some of you younger people who didn't get that one. But the reality is, is that these people have kind of by unintended consequences of this Town Center Plan, this Town Center plan, these people actually would love to have stayed in their place. But I imagine I'd be exactly like you. If you threw that Ichijo development, and I'll be nice here, next to my house, I'm gone, right? I'd move out, too. So, and they're building a home right here in the city, right? So again, it kind of proves the point that the Town Center really isn't necessary. A lot of people are saying, yeah, we got to have this Town Center. It's going to solve all our problems. Didn't solve your problem, did it? It's not going to solve your problem. And they're not even going to move into Town Center, which is supposed to provide them with the housing. I'm a school teacher. I'm not moving into Town Center. So all I'm going to say is, what I think, my recommendation to you is, you're going to do what you're going to do, right? It's going to be a yes or it's going to be a no for them, and I hope you help them out, right? But I think you should put a caveat into that, and my recommendation to the council then would be to say, we need to revisit, make this a bigger issue about really, do we really need this Town Center at all? Like, let's look at it from the big picture of who are we as Sammamish? What's our character, and what are we going to do? And is it necessary? Is it really our solution? Yet, my wife and I, well, I wasn't there, but I got the rundown on it, looked through the whole thing for the region on the transportation. Nothing's coming up here anytime soon. So if transit's the solution to the Town Center to get the people off the hill, when? 2050? 2060? I don't know. There's no plan regionally for them to bring that up here. So then it's about to this idea, so this is the two camps on this election, and yes, I'm running, folks, all right? But that's the thing, is the Town Center really going to solve our problems, and then everything's going to be great? Or is, like these people have proven with the words they've said tonight, they would love to stay in the city, and they'd love to stay in the home that they were in. They didn't want to leave. I don't want to leave either. I love my property, and I love my wildlife. I love the trees that I have on my property. I mean, we should be looking at the bigger picture of the comprehensive plan and seeing is, is this really what we want Sammamish to look like? So that would be my recommendation. Help these folks out because that's the right thing to do. The council's going to have to make that decision on doing what's right. But the overall picture of the rest of the city and what it's going to look like over the next 25, 30, 40, 50 years, to be honest, that's not the legacy that this resident would like to see. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kent. Go ahead.
My name's Anne Pearson. I'm from Bellevue, excuse me. And I know the San Tonys in a professional manner. My address is at 10-800 Bellevue Way. And I've spent many years with ARCH, a regional coalition for housing. This is an affordable housing that Sammamish is a part of. There are seven cities in the region that work together to bring in affordable housing. And the Town Center plan that Sammamish has put together, and the Planning Commission is working hard to enact, is going to help with affordability. It's going to help with traffic. It's already a set plan, and a two-and-a-half acre parcel in the middle of the high-density area makes no sense. It should be a high-density, affordable housing opportunity, senior housing opportunity. It's a place where traffic will be alleviated as traffic comes into the city. We have so many examples of cities that have grown successfully by having a plan in place. This parcel should be a A plan because it is without a buffer in a high-density area. It's a perfect piece of land for that. And the highest and best use of land is what the public wants to consider in their development of the city. So just as an outside perspective, I wanted to add my two cents to encourage the Planning Commission to vote for the process to continue, be approved on the A for the benefit of the community and for the benefit of affordable housing, for traffic in the whole region. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Patrick, are you going to speak? No?
Turns out I do have a couple of little things to say.
Okay. Now I've got to cross you, uncross you off the list.
All right. Thank you so much. I live in 23102 Southeast Eighth, which is the last of the E houses, three houses down from the church. Lived there for about two years now. So far, loved it. By far the best place I've ever lived in my whole life, and I've lived in quite a few places now. It's always been a little bit concerning to the fact that I was in an E, or the taxes are going to get raised on me or not. So it's been, you know, it's been quite an assurance that, you know, that the city took the time and set it aside and sort of protected those individual family homes. So that's great. The one minor thing I want to say, I'm in agreement with everyone else that this, if the owners want to leave and want to be, they want to sell, then it makes sense for them to be able to rezone before they sell, and then they can get out, and then Town Center can do what it wants. So I'm totally sympathetic to that. The one thing is that walking around the neighborhood, I've noticed that there's virtually no pedestrians ever. There's almost no place to walk where you don't hear high-speed cars zooming and roaring up the hill. And as we add more and more density to the area, as we add more and more people, just having a place where you can walk around, where you can, if you want to have a walk-in neighborhood, I think it's important then, as these zoning opportunities come up, that the walking opportunities are considered. For example, the properties behind this property are still undeveloped. The area behind the row of houses I live in are undeveloped, and I could easily imagine, you know, trails and recreational opportunities being put in. For example, when I was in Malmö in Sweden, you would have always the main street, a row of reasonably high-density housing, and behind that would be a greenway. And you could walk almost anywhere in the city just by following greenways as you go. Children could play back there, completely safe from cars. People could bike there, again, safe from cars, no car noise. And it was just a complete revelation, and you almost never see that around here. But I guess my one point is that as these development opportunities come up, there should be, it's an opportunity to create easements or to plan for creating, you know, greenways and walking areas. So that's all. Thank you.
Are you sure about that? You're done? Thanks, Patrick. Mr. Stickney.
Hello, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. In addition to what was in the packet, and I understand and support that, I would call attention to the Sammamish vision statement that calls for meeting housing affordability through, I'll stutter on the B, through, I'll spit it out, through, I'll say the B, darn it. Somebody can help me if they want. And I'm not trying to make emphasis here. Here is the balanced.
Balance.
Appreciate it, Maureen. Yeah. But I think the city, I think that's the issue in the city, is that housing supplies are out of balance over time. I would also call attention to our comp plan, Policy H, you know, 2.2, that talks about have housing types to meet the needs and the preferences of all Sammamish residents. I would also call attention to our land use, 2.1, that talks about to promote a variety of housing types to meet all housing needs. You've heard me talk a lot over the years. We were involved in the Housing Strategy Plan. I'm not going to repeat all that happened there, but there was a lot of input there. You've also heard me talk a little bit on the Urban Forestry Plan, and a common theme that I chatted about in those plans was sort of a common sense approach. Everybody knows in Sammamish, there's one heck of a lot of large, single-family homes. We also know in Sammamish, there's not many smaller housing options for lots of income levels, not just affordable housing. It's about housing affordability for all, for seven, you know, generations of people over recurring cycles of life. And a couple of years ago, and I say this with complete sincerity, maybe three or four years ago, Kent Trine came up here for the first time I saw him, and he said, just tell me where are we headed as a community so I can decide if I want to stay here or not? I think that's a wise move. And although Kent and I may not have the same opinion on what that outcome is with our only somewhat informed point of view, I think it is time for the community to have a fully informed point of view and to get all the information about internal needs over cycles of life for seven, you know, generations that will repeat. This is a small step in the right, you know, direction. There we go. Appreciate it, guys. Emphasis. So I would just close by saying I agree with Kent Trine to tell the city council to look at the land use. However, I don't think we can, you know, presuppose, there are those in the camp that would say, let's have very, very little growth over time. There are those that would say, let's support what the city has been on. The current comp plan and zoning was to minimize and mitigate relative to county zoning. I personally suggest optimizing, which is to have increases of certain types of housing and have less of certain others, but not on a guess, not on a whim, not based on feeling, although subjectivity is important and so is the objectivity. I think it's time for everybody to reassess a three-Q-IQ, and that is a little bit like a Star Wars robot, R2-D2. And here's the three. If roads would allow our city to do the kind of growth we want, if schools would allow to do the kind of growth we want, but there were no growth targets, none, would we as a community be satisfied with our housing stock as is to keep our community and keep people in housing over time? That's the question. The I is the information that is missing. And the I is a comprehensive needs analysis, like what the city did for the comp plan in 2003 for the transportation analysis zones. They studied an incredible level of sophistication for over 200 zones. I've been calling for studying about 40 or 50 economic and demographic categories at forestations in time, whether you rent or own now and in the future, and then do statistically valid surveys to not guess, but find out whether people want to stay in the city or not over time. And then have, with that information, talks about pros and cons of what's the right optimized mix over time, and talk about what's the contrasting consequences. For folks that would advocate for no growth, cool, what are the consequences? For those who would say, stay the course we're on, what are the consequences? For those that would fall into the camp of optimizing like I do, what are the consequences? And then get the thing that is the most important of all. What is the fully informed public consensus on what is the best desired land use for our future? I think that could help set our city free and create great wealth for our community across all the sectors, as I've talked about in the past. But I'm in support of this as a small step in the right direction. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Anyone else? All right, I'm declaring the public hearing closed. Now we'll have some deliberation, but to do that, we need to start with a motion. I don't think there is one. Is there?
We have two motions. Option one and option two.
Pick one.
Okay. Let's start with option one. Recommended approval for the application to change the future land use map for the parcel from TCE to TCA as requested by the applicant.
Is there a second? I think I can second it, can't I?
I'll second it.
Okay. So moved and seconded to recommend, as requested, to the council. Is there discussion?
I think the San Tonys deserve resolution in an affirmative to the city council from this board, but I have some concerns over the recommendation to move to TCA. And these concerns cover several different things. One, they talked about the wedding cake theory. And according to my map, we're going from TCA to TCE because the property where the church is is an E, and that's going from one end to the other. I think there should be a buffer zone in between that, to continue that theory. The other concern I have, which is a concern many of us share about traffic, the higher the density, the more people, the more traffic there's going to be. And traffic, honestly, in this city's a mess already, and I don't see any plan in the Town Center plan to deal with the traffic at all. And I'm very concerned about that. If you commute at all in the morning or the evening, even on the weekends, 228th is a mess. And too many of us live where that's really our only access. So that's a huge concern to me. I would like to make a compromise to the, I would suggest a compromise to suggest that, yes, we change their property from TCE to TCB and suggest that they approve that.
So if you want to move to amend, that would be the right way to do that?
I would like to move to amend that we change from TCA to TCB.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion. Essentially, we will recommend to the, as amended, we would recommend to the city council that the change of zoning be approved, but instead of moving from TCE to CCA, it would be from TCE to TCB. Is there any discussion about the amendment?
Kent's burn special is only on Sunday through Wednesday, but it sometimes starts at eight and also is repeated at 10:00. So we're going to have to extend the meeting from the current 8:50 to 9:10 PM.
It's been moved and seconded to extend to 9:10. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, we're extending to 9:10. Back to the amendment. The amendment is to change the motion to recommend to the council to approve, but change it from approving to the TCA to instead TCB. And I couldn't tell if anyone had any comments in that regard. I would, I would maybe just make the comment to remind everyone to take a quick look at the matrix of what the difference is between TCA and TCB. There are certainly some dwelling units, maximum dwelling unit differences. TCB also allows other options, single-family homes, duplex cottages, in a limited fashion, never intended to be fully that, but in a limited fashion. And TCA is outright commercial. TCB is limited commercial. I think we did have some comment about the mid-market parcel and how that worked, so perhaps that is not as critical in the discussion as that. Those are the differences between TCA and TCB, so please make sure you kind of consider that. I guess there's also, if I look on the second page, there's also the difference that there's a bit more tree retention in TCB. 25% is what the tree retention for the Town Center requires in a Town Center B zone. Otherwise, it's essentially, most of the rest of this is pretty similar. Okay. Any questions or discussion about the amendment?
Say that I support the B change. I think it matches, the dwelling unit amount matches what they have in their request, the max number that they said in their property would match what the max, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is listed in TCB. And I think TCB matches better with the character of the area and the wedding cake idea. So I'm in support of the amendment.
I actually do not support the rezoning because, I mean, just this morning, we got an email from the school district, you know, and they have, I don't think, I don't know if they sent any emails to the city council or the staff before this expressing their concerns for the additional number of students that, you know, they're at capacity in their school districts, and, you know, rezoning this piece of property will definitely impact that. I think, you know, when I've been talking to a lot of people, trees are really important. And, you know, although there are no critical areas in this property, there are a lot of trees there. And, you know, converting this into a TCA or B will essentially remove all those trees. The other thing that I do want to also point out is that, you know, I don't think there's any restriction in selling the property right now as it is. I mean, I understand the desire to sell it after the rezoning is done because that's an incentive, but there's nothing otherwise stopping, you know, the applicants from selling their property. And, you know, I think the reserve, I know it's been brought up saying, you know, when I-- I read the code, the reserve property, the reserve zone means, you know, had we met all the requirements that are in TCA, B, C, and D, if we had met those requirements and if the city was still in, cities still had to take growth, then we would go to Zone E and then, you know, then change the land use map for Zone E. So that is what my understanding is, and I think that is how we should approach this because, as we know, you know, the town center plan was passed in 2007, and it's still not built out yet, it's still under process. And as we know, there are lots of issues, like Mark mentioned, with traffic and transportation, and especially along town center, all the improvements for especially traffic transit, you know, has to be initiated by the developers. So I do not support rezoning of this property.
Does anyone else have comments on the amendment? Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. And the amendment is to change the motion from recommending from Town Center E to Town Center A to recommending Town Center E to Town Center B. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
So that passes. Thank you. Now we have deliberation on the motion as amended. And would anyone like to make comments on the main motion as amended?
The purpose, one of the purposes, to reiterate a little bit why I suggested this, is this reduces the number of housing units and the population of that land from the TCA to the TCB. Also, I feel that there was a, not a contractual maybe, but certainly inferred agreement with these folks, that this would be acceptable to the city when it came time for them to move. And I've had my own struggles with the city on some issues with my property, but it doesn't even, it pales in comparison to what they've been through. And I think it would be remiss in our obligations to them and to the city in general, in the greater sense, to reneg on that commitment, verbal or understanding as it may be. Additionally, this is a two-acre piece of property. This is not a 30-acre piece of property. It's not going to have that big of an impact, but if we can save some trees and reduce the number of units on this piece of property, I think that's wise. And that's, again, why I suggested the amendment.
Josh?
Addressing the school district letter, I wish someone from the district would have been here tonight to kind of speak to that a little bit more, but the district's concerned about additional student capacity, but this land use change doesn't impact their capacity. It still, it keeps the town center at the level that was planned for long ago. It doesn't increase at 2000-plus, it just keeps it there. And this is now land that can be developed within the 2000 limit. I think that keeping it as TCE and then suggesting the sale at whatever value they can get now, I can't imagine, of course, this is just guessing, that someone would buy the land on the assumption that they were going to live there long-term. Someone would buy the land squat and wait for it to be rezoned later, and then somebody else would benefit from a short-term purchase. I can't see myself supporting that. So I'm just gonna, I'm going to be supporting the motion.
Mr. Podg, do you have something to add?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to clarify the school district's letter. We were able to have a conversation with the school district this afternoon. We did engage the school district early in this process, as Miriam had outlined, where we held a meeting with all the different stakeholders to try and understand what the different impacts would be on infrastructure, capacity, et cetera, through this process. The school district did clarify and want to clarify that the letter that they submitted was not meant to be a letter of opposition or a letter in favor of the proposal. What it really was is a letter that was identifying that they have their own process by which they go about forecasting for infrastructure demand. And what they were asking is that they were hoping to work closely with the city if a rezon was occurring so that they could get proper information put into their system as they go through their capital facilities planning process to ensure that adequate resources are made available for potential students that might move into new homes if there was to be a rezon. And that was really the point of their letter. They wanted to clarify that it was not a letter against or in favor of this, and that that is the city's business. What they are trying to do is work closely with the city to ensure that their forecasting is done properly and that they have adequate resources should there be a rezon that occurs.
Thanks for that. I'll just add the comment, because I can't resist, that that is not what the letter that they sent us said, frankly. And my only comment is the Lake Washington School District has significant problems of their own, and perhaps they should look at their own problems before sticking their nose into our business. And I hope we get the opportunity to meet with them and have that discussion. By the way, when did we actually receive that? Because we all got it late this afternoon, like at the very last minute, and you guys talked to them way early on, so I'm curious what the timing was.
It was received late this afternoon.
Yeah. I mean, very frustrating, inappropriate, unprofessional. All right. Other comments about the rezon motion as amended?
Well, I just kind of, a couple of comments. I kind of feel like, you know, this decision is hugely, I'm very hugely conflicted over this decision, I have to say, because I feel deeply for the San Tonys and where they find themselves at right now. And I'm currently looking at a map from the town center plan, which kind of sets out all the different zones. And one of the things embedded in that plan are all these connector roads that go from Southeast 8th to connect Southeast 4th around behind East Side Catholic, and then would also connect then around to Inglewood and around and down into Southeast 4th again. And that's one of the parts of this puzzle that we're missing when we talk about traffic, because we don't have all our connector roads and our minor arterial roads connected in the city. We had a map there not that long ago when I was at the transportation master plan showing how much of our internal road systems are not connected. So we are all forced out onto one, if not two, roads every single day when we try to leave the city, which is 228. And as a result, we are all stuck in traffic just to move a couple of feet or a couple of miles down the road. And then we have these kind of curious exits and entrances off 228 into various private properties and to churches and that type of thing, where everybody comes to a grinding hall to elect people to go in and out off 228. So in a way, I feel that when we're looking at a rezon of this property, we're looking at an incomplete plan. We're looking at a plan that was put together a while ago, and we don't have all the pieces to the puzzle are not there. The infrastructure's not there to kind of show us, this is how all this works. If we built it all out, it would work, but we're here kind of like 25% into the plan, if not, if not, we can't see what this is all going to look like. So when I look at a property that's looking to upzone, and we know how many units are potentially going to go in there, and we talk about all the trips that are going to be generated from this property, but we don't have those connector roads around there that would maybe help mitigate that situation, they may come after, and then maybe 10 years from now we'll go, oh, it's all good now. So I feel hugely conflicted about this because when you're talking to people who were here before most of us were here, and came in at the beginning of this plan, and talked to all those who were putting this plan together and said, you know, down the road, if you want to hang on and you want to wait, you can upzone your property and that'll be okay. So I'm still kind of thinking about where I stand on this because I want, I hear from the community and I hear about the tree retention policy, and I hear, and I love the trees that are on the San Tonys property right now, but I also feel for the property owner who wants to kind of move forward with their plans and what they thought their property was going to be. And like you said, Mark, it's a two-acre site. It has no significant critical areas or steep slopes on there, and it's a very small piece relative to this whole massive plan that we're looking at. So I just want to make those comments right now.
Mark, go ahead.
As far as the traffic and the roads, I've been here since '84, so that's long before the Sammish was a city. And I also spent a career dealing with traffic and traffic flows and how to get in and out of places when it was not easy to do so. And these feeder roads that they're showing on that map really don't do anything to alleviate traffic on 228. They're specific to the town center and access to the town center. So for instance, I live on the north end of the plateau, so for me to get to town center, I still got to get on 228 and come 80% to 90% of the way to town center on 228. And then depending on where I want to go in town center would determine what feeder road I would go to to do so. So as I see the roads that they had on that plan for town center, they're not really arterials, they're not going to be four-lane roads, they're going to be two-lane roads. And that doesn't really do much to alleviate the problem. It will help, absolutely, but the city seems to really live in some sort of fog over how to deal with traffic. And then they want this great town center, and I don't, I've never seen any kind of plan or idea that's going to help overall with our traffic problem. Town center is just going to make it worse. So I think that the compromise going to be instead of A helps a little bit to alleviate some of the density and protect some of the trees perhaps, create that buffer zone in the wedding cake idea that they want to use, and then provide the San Tonys some relief, which I think is reasonable.
Anyone else? I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I think that, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, go ahead.
I think that, for me, the way I frame this is a little different. I think there's been a lot of perception that the San Tonys have requested a zoning change, and I don't see it that way. We, as the city, when I say we, I don't mean the seven of us, I mean, we as a community of Sammish decided through a process where we developed a town center plan that we wanted to change the zoning at the center of the city. That was us that did that. And in fact, the San Tonys didn't want to do that. They were actually opposed to it at the time because they wanted to be able to stay in their home. And there's lots of discussion and explanations about why. I frankly understand that. We've been in our house for almost 20 years, and I want to stay there as well. So I think it's important to recognize that the change in the zoning that's being requested is not, as some of the inappropriate comments I would say on social media have been, people trying to do a money grab or take advantage. This is something that the city wanted to do from the beginning, but a compromise was reached so that the city could still have a plan. And we can certainly debate that plan now, 10, 12 years later, and change it. But that has nothing to do with San Tonys. They wanted to be able to stay in their home, and a compromise was reached, as we've all seen, that we would not upzone as the city wanted to. We would leave those parcels in a temporary condition so that in a future date, and no one knew when that would be, two years, 10 years, it may not even be for another 20 years, or maybe never, but when the date came that they wanted to sell their property, then the upzone that the city always wanted could take place. And in the meantime, they would not be burdened with the kind of taxes that might have driven them out of their home anyway. This is really us discussing 10 years later what the city wanted to do at that time. The city wanted to upzone, and now it's finally come to fruition that that's going to happen. I think it would be really unfair and quite inappropriate for us as a community to punish a couple of longstanding community members who've been participating in the process all the way through because we've changed our mind or are conflicted about regrets over decisions we made a decade ago. So therefore, I'm absolutely in support of this change. I think we need to stop this discussion, move on to other things, allow the zoning change to happen. And then I'm sure at some future date, we'll actually be revisiting this topic on a larger scale in discussions about the town center and how it should proceed and what project may want to go there or may not want to go there. But let's end this now. Recommend to the city council that it be approved, and we can get on to other things.
I'm going to be very, very quick. The reason I was against the amendment, I want to send something to the city council that we saw tonight, so I would be in favor, I was in favor of just moving that forward the way it was unamended. So that's all.
I just want to, I absolutely respect the San Tonys and the effort that they've put in. Where I come from, I just, you know, I have not seen it codified to say, or in the code or anywhere else saying that the reserve E-zone would be automatically upzoned. And I think my biggest fear is that any other zone, people having other zone properties can come up and just say, we have been promised this, you know, we can also, we also want to rezon. So that is one of my biggest fears. And like I said, you know, in the municipal code and the letter that the staff has shared as well, we have not seen that. I mean, I know we've seen some personal testimony, but that is what it is. And, you know, I think the city has also had calls from other applicants saying, you know, the city manager promised me this, so, you know, I want my application or I want my lot to be rezoned. So that is my biggest fear. And then also, you know, the current plan for the city, for the town center has not been realized. I mean, there's still a lot of scope in the way the current zoning has been done, and we have not even realized that, too. So to upzone something that is in reserve, I still don't support that. And, you know, no disrespect to the applicants and, you know, their service to this community. I think that's, but I do not support the rezoning.
I call for the question.
Go ahead, one more, one more couple of comments, and then we'll...
I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to take this property and maintain a single-family dwelling on it. I just don't think that's realistic. It's going to get upzoned whether the city does it or a contractor buys it and goes through the process. It's not going to stay at a single-family home. And if that's true, if that's the likely end result, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do it now and allow the people that have lived there all this time to sell it. I just don't understand that.
I'm sorry, we, this is not a time for public comments. I apologize, but that's the rules of the floor. Thanks. Okay. Now, the question's been called. Somebody want to second that, just for formality?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to call a question. So the vote that we're taking, oh, do we need to extend?
Well, yeah. Let's move to extend to 9:15.
Second.
Second to extend to 9:15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So we're extended to 9:15. So the vote that we're taking is recommending to the city council that the request be approved with the amendment that the zoning would be changed instead of to A3, it would be changed to B, I'm sorry, to Town Center A, it would be changed to Town Center B. So we're recommending that the city council consider approving the request, but to Town Center B. Is everybody clear on that? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
Five to two, that passes. All right. Do we have anything else this evening? Kelly? All right. Would someone please move to...
No, I'm not.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Hi. Hi. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.